Good morning, Statesboro. We're going to call the board. A meeting for August 7, 2018. It is now 9:00 a.m. We will have the invocation of the pledge of allegiance by Councilman John Wiggins.
Lord, thank you for the support today. Thank you for bringing us here today safely for fellowship and to make good decisions for our city, for our community, for our citizens. We thank you for wisdom and guidance to help us make decisions that are pleasing to us and pleasing to you. We thank you, Lord, for those all over the world who watch over us, make us a free country, make us a safe country. And we especially thank you that we have the opportunity to honor something that we're to hear today. Your name is great, pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to your God for which he stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to agenda item three. If you will.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that isn't on the agenda that we would have tried to put on the agenda. The person I'm going to talk about would say that it shouldn't be on the agenda. We have a man here who is a very quiet man. He spent 22 years working for the City of Statesboro. He worked on large projects, small projects, budgets, tight budgets, sploths, T-sploths. He can answer any question or he'll find the answer to that question. He went out into storms to check the streets, to check the stormwater, but mostly he went out to check the crews to make sure everything was okay. Robert's not an eight-to-five kind of guy. Robert works until the job is done. More than that, though, Robert is a great leader. He's a guy who does his very best to do the right thing every time. Robert is ethical in his interactions with everyone. And those last two things are probably the most important things to me that I've enjoyed working with Robert about. Finally, Robert will terminate and make Statesboro a better place. And for that, we should all thank him.
Well, as long as we're right, we all kind of like you a little bit, so if you haven't noticed, but Statesboro is definitely, the city's losing a definite jewel. But we definitely want to let you know that we appreciate you, we love you, we respect you. And if you don't want to turn in your letter of resignation, that's fine, we can rip that up. But we wish you the best of luck in everything you do. May God bless you and your family.
Thank you, Mayor. It's likewise. Just want to say one thing. I was privileged to work for the city, and I told them on Friday when I looked at them, that by that I mean I was privileged to work with the men and the women and the citizens of this community. And that's what I mean by that, and that comes from my heart. God, thank you for all the kind comments.
Thank you, Lord. You still get whatever. Absolutely. All right, we'll move on to agenda item A. This is a presentation of the City of Statesboro Employee Board. Christine, will you come forward?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and guests. I am the Human Resources Coordinator, and today I was lucky enough to be given the opportunity to recognize two outstanding employees. To give a little information on what the Employee of the Year and Employee of the Quarter Award is, to be audible for the Employee of the Year or Employee of the Quarter, employee must embody the city's mission, embrace worthy thinking and innovation, demonstrate and strive for excellence, exhibit high-quality customer service, model professionalism, celebrate teamwork, and promote safety. Also, Employee of the Quarter and Employee of the Year are based on a fiscal year. So I'm going to do Employee of the Year because he won it for Employee of the Year for 2018, which recently just ended at the end of June. And no words for either one of these people will do them justice from what people have told me and what I've seen. So I'm going to keep my words short. And I believe neither one of them know that they got Employee of the Year or Employee of the Quarter. But this person did win Employee of the Quarter for fiscal year 2018. And to be an audible for Employee of the Year, you have to be one of the four people that won Employee of the Quarter. And both times, they're playing in front of their peers. So y'all might have heard some of these words before, so again, I'm going to crack it a short. Because John Nikle is standing the crew leader and believes by example, he goes above and beyond his job performance. His shift begins at 6:00 a.m., but he might be on call at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. He has trained commercial drivers license, and he has trained, has passed the exam, and has been promoted. And without further ado, I would like to give Employee of the Year to John Nikle for fiscal year 2018.
One, two, three. And I can see your face, Mr. Sanders. There we go. One, two, three.
Thank you, y'all. Under the guidance of my superintendent, my assistant superintendent, I try to get the guys in the crew to listen and follow instructions to be successful in this operation. I've been on a good leadership. I appreciate everything that the city has done for me and my supervisor said. I just want to thank them all.
Thank you.
You saw me the other day.
For Employee of the Quarter for fiscal year 2019, quarter one, this person, I know, has no idea also that they were selected and was nominated by someone outside their department. This person also strives for excellence, and one of the things I thought was awesome is she was a part of saving the city money with the two hurricanes. We have Hurricane Matthew and Irma. She was a part of getting all the paperwork and preparing that stuff for FEMA. And she's looking around a little bit, so I'm going to go ahead and call her names. Without further ado, I'd like to recognize Missy Hagan for Employee of the Quarter, quarter one, fiscal year 2019.
We definitely want to commend the recipients for their hard work and for recognizing the entire staff of the work they do. I can't say enough about the employees that the city has overall. I tell you, if I call anybody, I call weird times, early in the morning, late at night, text, and they are always available. So we really are blessed to have a great team of people that work for the city. So we want to thank everybody and definitely appreciate the work of our two recognized today. We'll move down to agenda item C, which is recognition of the firefighters, fire officers involved in the rescue of two victims during a structural fire on the morning of July the 9th, 2018. Chief Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Chief, just before we start, you want to tell me about the logistics and how you wanted to do it?
Sure. So we have quite a few folks that are coming up, and these folks are on duty. Okay, we've got everything covered, and hopefully everything will just not catch on fire for keeping it in control. But what we're going to do is we're going to present the awards. I'm going to have them come around and greet each other, and then we'll leave them up here. And then, once we complete all the awards, we'll have Council come down and we'll do one big picture instead of trying to go back and forth.
Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. At 4:09 a.m. on the morning of July 9, 2018, Special Fire Department along with Bullock County Fire Department units for dispatch to 242 Channel Road were reported structural fire with victims entrapped within the building. Within three minutes of receiving the alarm, the first arriving Special Fire Department units confirmed that two victims were indeed trapped on the second floor of a building that was heavily involved with fire and smoke. The first victim was found hanging outside of the second-storing window that had smoke bellowing from it, and the second victim was located in an interior room of an apartment on the seventh floor of the building. Firefighters, without hesitation and with a tremendous amount of poise, took action to rescue these two victims as well as contain and eventually extinguish the blaze within the building. Today, we are here to recognize those individuals involved with the successful rescue of the two individuals trapped inside the burning building. The first accommodation that we will be awarding is the Special Fire Department Unit Citation Medal. The Special Fire Department Unit Citation Medal is awarded to any group of two or more fire department members who make up a company, shift, sector, team, or work group that has performed in an outstanding manner worthy of recognition. The Unit Citation Medal is recommended by a superior officer within the fire department and is approved by the fire chief after a formal review of the actions for which the accommodation is being recommended. Before we present the medals, I'd like to take just a moment and read a portion of the recommendation that I received from Battalion Chief Stephen Morse, who was the on-duty chief officer, as well as the incident commander during this event. It brings me great pride, this is Chief Morse's letter, "It brings me great pride to be able to write this letter requesting that multiple members of the fire department be recognized for doing an outstanding job on the morning of July 9, 2018." As you well know, on that morning, Special Fire Department responded to 242 Georgia Avenue for reported a structural fire with multiple people entrapped. During the incident, all responding personnel played a vital role to produce a positive outcome. This incident brought great challenges for all involved, including multiple victims in need of rescue, heavy fire conditions, as well as the fire location itself. All responding personnel performed flawlessly and with great professionalism to overcome these challenges. The following individuals are being awarded the Special Fire Department Unit Citation Medal for outstanding performance during the course of carrying out their duties, which resulted in the successful rescue of two individuals trapped inside a burning building on July 9, 2018. I would ask that we hold our claws to the end. There's 13 of these individuals. I think we only have one that wasn't able to be here with us, and that was Captain Wilson. We'll certainly call his name for the record. First is Battalion Chief Stephen Morse. Now, I will point out that Chief Morse didn't recommend himself for the unit citation. He recommended his folks, but obviously, his leadership and trust and faith in his men certainly played a great role in his success. Captain Stacy Wilson, I don't think was able to be with us this morning. I think he's out of town. Lieutenant Raven Hutchinson. Go ahead and start making your way up there right here. You know who you're going to be. You know who you are. Lieutenant Derek Stoddard. Fire apparatus operator Caleb Newt. Lieutenant Brad Bushland. Fire apparatus operator John Patterson. Firefighter Timothy Bartholomay. Firefighter Marcel Farmer. Firefighter Cody Hare. Firefighter Casey Perkins. Firefighter Trey Siemens. Last and certainly not least, firefighter Robert Tillman. All right, gentlemen, if you want to stay right there for just a second, we're going to go ahead and there's a few more awards that we're going to present instead of having everybody walk back up. In addition to this group being recognized for their outstanding performance, there were three individuals whose actions directly impacted the outcome of this incident. The Statesboro Medal of Valor is awarded to a member who, under extreme condition in which life safety is at great risk, performs in an outstanding manner worthy of special recognition. The Medal of Valor is one of the most prestigious honors awarded to Statesboro Fire Department members and is presented to those only found deserving. I'm going to go back to Chief Morse's recommendation letter for just a moment. In the early stages of the fire ground operation, the victim was spotted screaming for help outside the second division window, second division meaning second story. Without hesitation, Lieutenant Brad Bushland scaled the extension ladder and extricated that victim from the window. For his outstanding actions as well as his display for courage and selflessness, Lieutenant Brad Bushland is being presented the Medal of Valor. Lieutenant Raven Hutchinson and firefighter Marcel Farmer engaged in an interior fire attack and searched for the victim, for a victim. Upon entry of the structure, heavy fire and smoke conditions were encountered. Without thought for their own safety, they advanced to the second division of the second story and located the second victim. Lieutenant Hutchinson and firefighter Farmer were able to remove the victim by carrying her down an interior stairwell and through the exit door to the outside. For their outstanding actions as well as their display of courage and selflessness, Lieutenant Raven Hutchinson and firefighter Marcel Farmer are being presented the Medal of Valor. Lieutenant? Let's give all these folks a... Maybe as I'm finishing up my comments, if you guys want to start making your way down, we'll start lining up for pictures as I finish up. I do want to mention that firefighter Farmer is one of our newest members and was very proud in which the way he carried himself that morning for a young firefighter that certainly needs to speak volumes about him. The manner in which all these individuals performed their duties the morning of July 9, 2018 embodies professionalism, dedication, and character that the Statesboro Fire Department wants and expects in all of its members. While these men this morning performed in a way that truly makes me proud, not only as a fire chief, but as a member of this community, I can stand before all of you this morning confidently say that all of our firefighters and fire officers would have acted and responded in the same manner without hesitation as these individuals did that morning. The entire Statesboro Fire Department has a great deal of pride and honor in serving the Statesboro and Bullock County community, and we thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, City Council, and outstanding firemen. I'm June DeCulito, CEO of Pynlon Behavioral Health and Development of Disabilities, and it was our program that was on fire, and it was our individuals that you saved. And I can never thank you all enough, and I can never express enough pride. When I got the call at 4 o'clock in the morning that our crisis rescue departments were on fire, of course, my first thought was our six individuals were going to be burned up. My second thought was no Statesboro Fire Department was going to come. And as I pulled up and saw all the trucks, I knew there was going to be a positive outcome because we had the greatest fire department ever, best chief, best firefighters, and all that. So thanks to each of you, our individuals, even the ones that were entrapped, were able to get out of the fire and safely and alive. Two had to go to the hospital, one had to have an extended stay. She had asthma and allergies in the smoke, as you know, she was the one that you brought out. She stayed several weeks, but she is alive today, and y'all are, we owe our debt of gratitude to you for that. And so Pynlon wanted to recognize the two firefighters, but it sounded like to me I needed to have about 13 or more plaques. So, and I'm sure y'all have heard this before, firefighters are heroes. There are heroes who walk among us, never looking for glory or praise. They don't seek recognition for their thoughtful, caring ways, living lives of deep commitment, providing protection and calming fears, steadfast with a quiet strength through times of crisis and tears. You are a person like that to us, the most selfless man by far, and we would like to thank you for being the hero that you are. So we are honoring, we brought one for firefighter Marcel Farmer and Lieutenant Raven Hutchinson in y'all's honor from Pynlon, but I better go back and get some more. And we certainly will because we cannot thank you enough, Chief. We cannot thank y'all enough. And the staff and the individuals, I mean, it is beyond belief when I got there and saw the extent of the damage, the great job that y'all did. Thank you so much. Thank you for Pynlon. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize them. Thank you, Rachel.
I didn't do anything but hire most of them.
We're going to go ahead and back into the business of the city. We're going to go back to the line item 1D, which is a presentation by the Ethological Planning Group on completion task order, shield, storm order, master plan. Jason, will you give us some insight on this?
Yes, sir. Jason Bowles, Director of Urban Engineering. Rob Brown, Ethological Planning Group will provide a presentation shortly on the engineering and logic drop study for Task Order 2, the comprehensive storm order master plan. This is in the MLK West Basin. The first one is recap a little bit how we got to this point. CPG assisted the city in preparing for implementing the storm order utility. In October 2016, the city entered an agreement with CPG to implement the storm order master planning. This phase of the master plan that we're currently on now, Task Order 2, focuses on the area from Miller Street Extension downstream to Proctor Street. This information will provide us with guidance on measures that we can take to improve drainage and mitigate flooding in this area of the city. And this work was performed currently with the CPG Engineering, which is also in the city area in San Jose. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Rob Brown.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Council. My name is Rob Brown. I'm a water resources engineer at Ethological Planning Group. We're based out of Savannah. And my name is... We're based out of Savannah, and I'm here today to present some highlights about the second phase of our storm order master plan. As part of this project, we also work with the project team of Thomas and Hutton, as well as the local surveyor, James Anderson and Associates. So before we get into the work of the current project, I wanted to highlight the first phase of our storm order master plan, just to give you all the background, information of how we got here. So EPG has been working with the city for the past four or five years, the implementation of stormer utility. But last year, we completed the first phase of our storm order master plan. And as part of this, the first phase and aspect was to develop a complete drainage inventory across the city, and we worked with the city to identify the 3,600 structures of stormer outlets. We also identified all the drainage pipes and ditches throughout the city. And as part of this, we just really wanted to develop a comprehensive inventory of what all is out there, and its condition, and what types of needs it has. So during the inventory of the system, we looked at presence of sediment, erosion, just really identified structures that were likely in need of maintenance. Next slide, please. So once we developed this complete drainage inventory, we used the results from this condition assessment to develop a proactive maintenance work plan. So as part of this work plan, we identified structures that had higher priority levels of maintenance needs, those with, that would cause more instances of flooding with either very high sediment presence in the drainage pipes, or a lot of debris, or excessive erosion. So these were prioritized to be the ones that the city would address first in terms of the proactive maintenance plan. So as part of this plan, we developed three tiers of priority levels for each of the structures that had maintenance needs, and worked with the city to use their existing infrastructure zones, in which there's 12 zones across the city. And then they're going to be working one zone per month, rotating each month across the city. So then, one calendar year, they'd be able to address maintenance needs across the city. And then first addressing those top-tier priority issues, and then moving next down to the second tier, and then eventually to the third tier. And from what I've heard so far, in terms of, sorry, one other thing to mention is that the city continues to be monitoring, addressing citizen complaints first, but this is just a way for us to be able to be proactive with maintenance needs and address the issues before the phone calls and complaints happen. And as far as what I've heard so far from Marcos Teo, is that overall complaints for our drainage system has been a lot less than it has been in the first year, or in the previous year, however it has been some more recently just because of these large, intense rainstorms that we've been having. But overall, the frequency of complaints has been down attributed to this proactive maintenance that the city is undertaking. Next slide. So then, as part of the next aspect of the first phase of the storm order master plan was also to look at the capital improvement project list. And from this, with the drainage inventory, we're able to identify a few other new capital improvement projects that were out on the previous list that was developed as part of the stormer utility development. So we looked at identifying and prioritizing these capital improvement projects. And then with the new drainage inventory, we're able to refine our drainage area basins, be a lot more exact in terms of what's flowing there, and identifying specific drainage basins. These basin drains in size from about 100 acres to 1,000 acres, and there's 32 in the city, of which 20 have a capital improvement project in it. And the total capital improvement projects across the city is 59. Each of the capital improvement projects were prioritized based off eight or nine factors, ranging on whether it was presence of structural flooding, street flooding, ease of construction, tox analysis, a number of other factors, too. Next slide. So then, once we prioritize all the individual capital improvement projects, then we looked at where the projects were located within the basins that we were, that had been delineated, and worked to develop a prioritized list of which basins we would address first in terms of the modeling and master planning, to be able to address the basins with the most and largest issues first. So I'm highlighting one area of the city that is the focus of this current work that I'm going to present now, on Martin Luther King West Basin 7. And in this basin, next slide, this one was selected as the highest priority based off of several different factors. First of which, it had six capital improvement projects in it. This was second most, the one with the most projects was three times the size in total area. But overall, this basin had the highest total score, the cumulative rankings from all the six capital improvement projects. This one ended up top on the list, and then had the second highest total capital improvement project estimated cost, a little over a million dollars. And then two of the projects in this basin were in the top four. So really, it had a combination of a lot of practices that were very highly ranked, as many as two that were top of the list. Overall, this basin is 255 acres, has more than three miles of ditches, two foot mile miles of pipes, and the main channel through the basin is 1,000 miles. So a pretty substantial network that we were looking at. The green squares on this map identify the locations of those six capital improvement projects. So once we identified this as the highest priority basin, this ended up being the focus of our second phase of the storm order master plan, focus of this task order two. To do so, we had looked at developing hydrologic model of this basin to understand areas where there was going to be excessive flooding, and then so we could help design some solutions to help address these flooding issues. So the first step was to review the drainage inventory. There were a few areas, because of initial drainage inventory focused primarily in the right-of-ways and city-owned properties, there are a couple of structures on commercial private areas, and also a couple of county facilities that had not been identified, so we had to go back out and just finish and fine-tune that drainage assessment. And then based off of the 180 structures identified in this basin, we had worked with James Anderson Associates, a surveyor out of Statesboro, to collect survey-grade elevation data in each structure. So this is important inputs that we put into the model for calculating flow rates. So we had measured survey, or had surveyed the elevations at 180 structures, but then also surveyed cross-sections, the 15 street and cross-sections. And this is other important model inputs to calculate flow through the main drainage network. Next slide. So once we have all this information about elevations and data from the drainage network, then we're able to develop our hydrologic model of the basin. The model that was used was called interconnected pond routing, or ICPR. A lot of engineers like acronyms, so that's this modeling. But this picture shows basically our drainage network from this basin. That blue line is the ditches and the main channel. The red is the pipes. And then this kind of shows a digital elevation model of our basin, where red is the highest elevations, and it goes down to green, the lowest elevation. So we're able to, or this model's really important because it's really useful because it incorporates multiple layers within the model, and it's very comprehensive, and it's commonly used in this types of applications, and it's widely accepted across many different jurisdictions in Florida, coastal South Carolina, for use with female modeling. Look at all the results from this basin and model are going to be used to identify areas with drainage deficiencies where storm or engineer solutions are needed to address these flooding issues. Next slide. So just to review, a simple example of some of the output from the model, just to give you an example of what we're looking at for identifying flooding. So this image shows an example of what's, what we're looking at for a profile view of our model output for a flow system. So this is for a pipe or a culvert. So the blue line is showing the top and bottom extents for a pipe. So in the profile view, you see that the green lines have a horizontal top and bottom. This represents just the top of the pipe and the bottom of the pipe. But the red line highlighted in the image on the top left is where we set warning stages within the model for the profile. So once the water level exceeds this red line, it's overtopping the roadway, causing flooding. So that's what the profile view looks like, where we're seeing red lines any time the flooding, or the water level gets above this, we're identifying flooding conditions so we can identify this as an issue. The next slide shows what we're looking at for flow systems, or sorry, for open systems. These are for your ditches and canals. So for this, the red line was set as the elevation of the sidewalk, or the top of the curb, because once the elevation or the water level reaches this, we'll start to see flooding within our roadways. And then the green line is just the bottom of the channel, because there's no flow system, there's just a green line in the bottom, top and bottom. Next slide. So after we had run the model for the system, we had looked at five different design storms ranging from the 24-hour, one-year event to the 100-year event, and we identified five areas with flooding, represented by the red stars, and overlapped it with areas where there's capital improvement projects highlighted in the green. But in working with the city, we had set the design storms for major street crossings as the 100-year event, and this means that there's a 1% chance in any given year that this size event's going to occur. For Statesboro, it's about 8.8 inch event. And then for the 25-year event, was set as the design storm for all other drainage areas where there's not a major street crossing. And this is an annual occurrence of 4% on a given year, and this size event is about 6.6 of ours.
In an hour?
What's up? No, in a 24-hour period of work. So this is one of the examples of areas where there was flooding, from Blitch Lane down to Little Ox Creek, just south of Luden River Park. So in the, so this is at the most downstream end of our basin, and in the top picture, you see a little bit of the yellow highlighted area. This is representing where we're seeing our profile views of the graphs presented below. So we see our profile view of what this segment looks like, and then once we routed a 10-year storm through it, you see the blue water level. You can notice that there's flooding just downstream of Proctor Street. As part of the initial capital, or initial storm or master plan, this area was identified as one of those top capital improvement projects, and was identified to have a $150,000 drainage study in this area, and this capital improvement project was rated type for second, as having the second highest capital improvement project index. So this was one of the main areas that we knew coming in was going to be an issue, so we had worked to kind of develop this drainage study for this segment of the basin to help address that capital improvement. Next slide. So we'd be able to find what types of needs we had for that. So this looks at the 25-year event, and then we move into the 100-year event, and we see the flooding continues to increase as the storm size increases. From the 100-year event, we're seeing overtopping the roadway of it Blitch Lane, and pretty much along that whole entire segment of MLK. As you're aware, that's an area where there's common stormer complaints of flooding issues. One of the main drivers for flooding in this area is attributed to tailwater conditions, and this is that where the water's flowing to downstream below our basin, the water's starting to pile up, that it's no, there's really nowhere for the water to go to, so it starts to build up more and more, and then overtopping to our roadways. So really, the need for this area is to install some detention downstream to help reduce that water level in the downstream channel to allow for the water to drain through. Next slide. This presents a few vantage points from the flood identified in the 100-year event, and we think this is a major roadway crossing. The 100-year event was set as a design storm for this project area. The picture on the left is just downstream of Blitch Lane, and then the middle one is just at Proctor Street, and then the one on the right is near Harris Convenience Store, down at the end of this drainage basin where it connects it with the other segment of So one of the model inputs is to incorporate what those tailwater conditions are for various design storms. And because there is no comprehensive drainage study in this area before, we were relying on the flood insurance rate maps, which shows that this area is in the 100-year flood state, in the 100-year flood range. But because this was the most, the best available, best data we had available, we'd utilize this in terms of, for our modeling inputs. However, we need, it would be beneficial to have a more complete downstream analysis in this area to be able to refine what this modeling is showing us in terms of, we make the final design, but what we were able to come up with was preliminary design, conceptual designs for addressing flooding issues based off of the best engineering data we had available. Next slide. So then, to address this, this area four, this area concerned from Blitch Lane to Little Ox Creek, conceptual design showed us installing a detention area in 1.4 acres of city-owned parcel that's, at the bottom of that picture, it's highlighted in blue. It's kind of the corner of West Jones Street or Proctor Street, and this area, this parcel is immediately adjacent to an existing park, the detention area. And the estimated cost for this project is about $450,000. However, there's ongoing detention that will likely be constructed in the next couple months. And between Bullock Street and Grady Street, it's highlighted with the red, the red box there. And as far as this existing detention that's going to be going in, this will help alleviate and reduce the size of what's being proposed in this conceptual design, so this will help reduce that $450,000 cost. However, there is a downstream analysis that's, that would be the first step for adequately sizing this additional parcel to adequately meet that 100-year design storm for this, this segment of Martin Luther King West. And then we did the same thing for the other five areas where I identified areas of flooding, but I'm just going to highlight the results of the conceptual designs at this stage now. So one of the second areas of flooding was along Johnny Simmons Way and near Green Street and Moore Street. And as part of this project, we had identified that there was flooding at Green and Moore Street from the five-year storm event. So this is much smaller than previously before, and this is also an area where there's been regular complaints of flooding, and it was also identified as a capital improvement project as during the first phase of the stormer master plan. We also identified flooding along Johnny Simmons Way from the 10-year storm event, so these are fairly smaller events compared to that large design storm. So these are areas in need of additional detention and upsizing of stormer pipes. So the conceptual design is a little over 2,000 linear feet of pipe upsizing, in addition to 12,500 cubic appearance detention that would be installed in a four-acre city-owned parcel that's adjacent to the stormer canal there. As far as that four-acre parcel, most of it was identified on the national wetland inventory as being wetland, so the next step would be to look at the actual areas that may or may not be wetlands to determine more of an exact cost. Right now, we're, weren't able to incorporate costs in terms of potential wetland mitigation credits that would be required. But based off the estimated cost for these drainage improvements, it was about 1.7 million, and because of the wetland impacts, this project will need a wetland impact permit from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. But that detention that I mentioned on that four-acre parcel, that was an existing capital improvement project from the previous phase of the study, and propose that for this existing, for this proposed detention, to incorporate a bike path or trail system to connect it to Luden River Park in order to help make it eligible for more grant funding or other funding sources, and helps to make it more of a community enhancement as well, as just a stormer management feature. Next slide. And then the next area is just continuing to move north of the channel, where the channel crosses Williams Road near the Board of Education Building. This area was identified to have flooding only from the 100-year storm event, because it's a major roadway crossing, and that was set as our threshold for a design storm. This was identified as an area immediately of a project to address the flooding criteria. The proposed project is upsize the existing culvert there, or project cost of about $200,000. And, but overall, this project has a lower priority than the previous two that I presented because there's no active complaints in this area, as well as it literally shows flooding at that 100-year design storm where the other ones we're seeing at the five and 10-year storm event. So those others two have a lot higher priority than this one. Next slide. And then being on Williams Street, traveling west towards Stockberry Road, there was a segment of pipe underneath the childhood childcare network. It was identified to have flooding from the 25-year storm event, so again, this one is from a much higher storm event, so again, a lower priority, and doesn't have active flooding complaints in this area, but the proposed project is 300 feet of linear feet of pipe enhancement, 400 feet of channel improvements. 300 feet of linear feet of pipe enhancement, 400 feet of channel improvements for an estimated cost of about $200,000. Next slide. So just to summarize a few aspects from this, this phase of the project, a couple of proposed next steps for what we're seeing from what we've accomplished so far in basin seven, Martinville County West. Area number three, that went along Johnny Simmons Way and Morrison Green Street, is going to be a highest, a high priority project. It's covering two existing capital improvement projects, such as that regional detention as well as improvements at Moore Street. Uh, the proposed cost is 1.7 million, and then we're suggesting to include community enhancements through the bike or trail system to help increase potential for grant funding and other funding sources for this project. But the first step for this would be to investigate the potential wetland impacts for that four-acre parcel of city and land to see if it ends up being that it's not cost-effective to use that parcel and maybe be more effective to look into other, other land area. But right now, that's the, the proposed area where it's best suited for detaining the water and having some regional detention within this basin to help reduce the flow rates downstream. But then where there's the larger impacts of the downstream flooding, you have the outlet of this basin near Martinville King and Blitch Lane and Proctor Avenue. That area's going to be benefit from having detention downstream, and then the proposed project that you have going on at Grady Street and Bullock Street is going to help considerably help relieve some of that flooding. However, it's not going to solve the issue completely, so there's still some additional detention that's wired downstream. But the, the first step for that is to kind of complete more of a, complete downstream analysis of that next segment down and analyze what the impact that your existing project is going to have to allow us to more adequately size the, the additional detention needed in this area. Uh, right now, that project is projected at $450,000, but will like maybe less. And then the other two areas, one and two, that I had discussed earlier, those are much lower priority, just because they had flooding less frequently and they have a lot more instances of complaints in this area. The next slide. So that summarizes the, the work that's been conducted specifically on basin number seven and where we've had six capital improvement projects. I'd like to turn things back over to Jason to discuss the storm management plan as well as we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to wrap up real quickly, um, this is just one of the many basins that we have in the city. So as we go forward, um, I guess I would pass it over to, to you all to consider how you want to proceed with this. If you want to look at doing projects in this basin or if you want to continue to study additional basins, I would recommend that we look at studying some additional basins, perhaps some downstream or maybe some other parts of town where they have some higher needs. Um, so just leave that with your consideration.
Well, well, before we start jumping into projects, we've got to talk about where we are right now with our budget. And right now, we don't have a budget to do any projects. All we have right now is bringing in about a million dollars a year. About 500,000 of that is used for operations, the other 500,000 is used to be paid off equipment. That's our million dollars that we're bringing in a year. So the talk of any other project going forward, if you're, if you're not thinking about a rate increase, is to wait three to five years before we're going to have free money to be able to do any of those projects we just talked about. So I don't, I don't want you to think it up to them, but we, we, we need to paint that picture that, that these are needed things in that basin, and we got 12 basins, and that's just one of them, and that's 1.7 million, maybe up, maybe down depending on some of those things I've discussed. But I think, I think this, this, this is the base of, there's work that needs to be done. It just depends how fast we want to do it and when we want to do it and what those costs are and figure out what the, what the costs for, for rate increases or any problems with them, we can actually start to do those projects. So, um, that's kind of where we are right now, where we're, we're studying a lot of things, finding out, not, not surprisingly, because we just started the system, that there are a lot of things that need to be done, so we're finding out exactly pretty much what we thought we'd find when we all started it three or four years ago. But that's, that's kind of where we are right, right now before we start jumping down.
Just want to, this is, I know Jason, probably a challenging question to answer, but let's just say three to five years from the money's available, how much worse can things potentially get in just this particular basin as an example?
I think the, the conditions that are there are what they are. So it's just a matter of what kind of rain events that we're going to have. In the last 30 days, we've had at least two three-inch rain events, um, three inches per hour rain events, and that's, that's significant. So we saw a lot of significant flooding around town. And some of the areas that, that Doug Brown was talking about with, um, Martinville or King, we saw some areas that we don't typically see flooding, so it depends on where the rain comes. It just really depends on weather patterns and how far out we can continue to.
So the conditions for what is, what could happen don't, don't necessarily change, it's just whether or not we have to warn or prevent.
That's right. We have the, the normal routine areas, um, and I mean, you can listen to, listen to the, the, uh, the, the radio, you'll hear a special police department talking, you know, dispatching officers to certain locations. Typically, it is the used to routine areas, and they go check the routine areas we have. And our staff knows that, the police department knows that. There's just certain areas that we need to be focusing on to mitigate those problems. Um, it just really depends on, we, for, for a long period of time, we, we're going to drought here, uh, we're going to drought, and so the last several years, we've been wet sometimes, and, uh, it's really been wet this summer, so, um, it's, it's something that we need to be focused on, and we need to work towards.
And, and even when we're talking about the maintenance part, because I drive through working through those maintenance things routinely, but I don't want everybody to think that we're doing that work, that we're still not playing those areas. We're just taking care of these, of these, of these little things, and there's, there's a lot of them.
Water to another area.
Quicker than it did before. And, uh, so Jason just said that, there was, there was one day on our, on our rain gauge up, upstairs, we were getting seven point, well, seven point eight inches an hour for about a, about a 10-minute stretch. Well, even that much rain, it doesn't matter what system we have, we're not catching it. It's going to flood. It doesn't matter if we're using a little system like that. And it seems like we're having more and more of those as we go along, having bigger rain events. So the guys are doing the best they can with the maintenance part. It's when we start to get to the, to the capital improvements, it's when we're really going to have to start coming up with a plan and how much you want to start setting aside per year so we can start doing those kind of projects and really start looking forward. And hopefully, uh, we can do that in the coming months and kind of give you an idea that we need, I'm just picking a number, this is strictly, uh, maybe we need 300,000 a year, so then we can start to bond some things and get, get, get some things going. So those are, those are things I hope we can bring in the next five or six months and we can start that plan to get that nature, because those are the things that need to be done. These are flooded areas that we need to take care of sometime.
Randy, what was it called the page?
To do the study?
Right. Um, I believe this was around 90,000, somewhere around there.
No, just for that one out of 12 districts, yeah.
That's right.
Do, do we have anything besides to continue that study under the other districts to do?
We have, we have CIP this year to study. We have CIP in 2019 to study another basin. We have that kind of, that money allocated.
And so, so, so what do you, because you start figuring out the study later, do we keep studying, or do we know we've got work to be done and you take some time and start to do the improvement, and then we do that, just study out a little bit further. So those are the kind of, that's, that's kind of where we're at, we got started, and now we have to, we're getting to those times when we have to make decisions about how we're going to do that.
Well, and I assume these districts connect as well, so I mean, there could be a little bit of solutions, in fact, more than one district.
That's right.
Because you can put it retention project, you can put it bigger pipes, move water faster somewhere else, yeah, there's.
I mean, and make sure we're in the right spot.
Yeah, right, you want to do the loop, right?
If you want, we'll bring you back some ideas of where we think we can go and what we think we can do.
I mean, looking at just, we're looking at about one, one billion dollars just to study. So we, we really have to make a determination as to do we spend that 1.1 on study, we use some of it for our resolution, how do you pace ourselves as far as this is concerned? That's why I have to do a conversation. And Randy, you mentioned rate increases. What, what are we talking about? What are we talking about rate increases?
I think, I think we, we start to figure out what that rate increases when we determine how much of, of the projects do we, do we want to take under 1.7, do we want to do 500, do we want to do further project, and we want to do some more studies, and we start kind of get the things kind of moving down. Down, so it's kind of a combination of, of things. They decide, I know that, uh, we, we have to do these studies, but the public likes to start to see projects and start to see the mitigation start to happen. There's a balance in the way you have to figure out.
I guess I agree, and I ask that question, I just thought there might be, not necessarily start studying each individual section, but identify the four or five really big projects. So in fact, not just one district, but multiple districts.
Initially, we were thinking top three basins to study based on initial test or one, and then start to, you know, and couple of some, some big projects to bond out or the Pigeon Arms, et cetera.
Okay.
That's right. Most of the basins.
Are you need further comments or questions for Jason?
I think y'all working so hard on Mark the Florida. Thank you for taking care of all these issues that have come up in the last two weeks that you might, I mean, they come out immediately.
Thank you.
Always appreciate y'all, y'all.
Jason. All right, um, uh, we'll move on to agenda item one, the implementation of the building code effectiveness, uh, training schedule, evaluation of building inspection programs formed by insurance services.
Mayor, um, so last month, Chief Rams with the State Fire Department gave an update on ISO classification rating for fire protection side of it. So now we're going to talk about the, the ISO rating for, for our building inspections program. Similar to Fire Department Insurance Services Office, also evaluates our building inspections program, building code effectiveness rating schedule. Yes, and this is, this is how its, the points are derived from this slide that you see up. It's going to utilize to assign a classification rating in a range from one to 10. Again, like the Fire Department, ISO evaluates, um, one being the best and 10 being, being the lowest rating. So ISO evaluates this on adopted codes, staff experience, certifications and training, plan review and inspections with respect to residential and commercial structures. These evaluations occur about every five years, and the most recent evaluation, protect inspections received a class four, again, in both residential and commercial class. So this is, we have, five years ago, when ISO rated us, evaluated us, we received a class four rating, and so again, this year, we've received a class four as well, you know, this time we received a class four as well. Back into that other slide. So how does this classification compare to other building inspection programs in the state? Because really, you have to compare us to other inspection programs for benchmark, not necessarily to how the Fire Department is evaluated in their, in their process. All right, so across the state of Georgia, as you see from the slide, there are no class one commercial or residential inspection programs. There are no class two commercial programs, only two residential building inspection programs. There are only nine class three commercial and only one class two residential building inspection programs in state of Georgia. And so of 400 commercial and 323 residential inspection programs, that's, that's about agencies just like ours evaluated by ISO in the state of Georgia. There are only nine agencies total that scored a lower classification in commercial inspections, and only three agencies that scored a lower classification in residential inspections than the city of Statesboro. So that's testament to, to our staff and how well they, how hard they work, how, how dedicated they are to our building inspections program. They work closely with fire inspections, trying to make sure things up to code, keeping structures as safe as we can, and we're being as business friendly to the commercial and residential consumers as we can. So I want to recognize our building official, Sterling Starling, building inspector, Greg Futch, interim city engineer, assistant city engineer, David Campbell, and our employee of the Corps, Missy Hagan, headman assistant for her hard work and all she does, helping coordinate everything, and will make sure that we're providing the best service that we can to the city. I'll take any questions that you have with us.
Council. Hi, Cal.
Thank you. I would just mention, when you, when you see that staff, the staff is, is lean like it is mostly throughout the city. So to keep these kind of, kind of ratings with the small staff we have, the people we have are doing a, doing a really good job, so we can keep that. So, um, I think sometimes people confuse us with larger organizations, we are fairly lean in the people we have, and those that we have work, work really hard.
Yeah, we only have, really Sterling and Greg are our only primary inspectors that we have in the city, so, um, and sometimes we have to help cover the county with their, with their help, flex person.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, we'll move down to agenda item four, public comments, and so we have your public comments. All right, we move down.
Still, boy, we got ringed out, though, in, in Seattle. I can remember what it was for.
Thanks for that, Jim.
What's that? Uh, hitting the certificate of distinction, 120 hours of GMA classes and trainings.
Yeah, the stick, anyway.
All right, um, we'll move on to agenda item five, consideration of a motion for a, this is an agenda, uh, a couple of minutes for July 17th, council minutes, executive session, and then July 25th, call council meeting and executive session. Is there a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that our item's passed, we'll move on to agenda item six, uh, which is the public hearing, first reading ordinance 2018-03, ordinance of the state law code, ordinance limiting chapter six, alcohol beverages regarding section six rule definition and section six nine minus in persons under 21 years of age. Um, is there a motion to go onto the public hearing?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Mayor, Council, um, this is the, this is the ordinance version that was, uh, was put together by Mike Bass, or so if it's okay, I'll pass it to him.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, all of you, Dan. Uh, thanks for giving us an opportunity to, to work on this ordinance. Uh, we have taken a stab at some language that really is fairly focused on three things, actually four things. Uh, one is the definition of bar, definition of event venue, definitions of live music, live performing arts, and the language that would surround compliance with state law, OCGA 33.24.1, et cetera. Uh, so if you would, I think you have these in this language in front of you, and I will walk through it very quickly. Uh, the first thing that we are recommending is that a, a definition of a bar actually be added to your current ordinance. And I am going to recommend that we not pay any attention to the language that we have provided there because after searching for about all week, finally, late last night, I remembered, remembered where I had seen the definition for a bar, and it actually is in the Georgia Code, uh, 312.1, uh, which basically says that premises which a retailer licensed pursuant to this title to sell alcoholic beverages derive 75% or more total annual gross revenue for sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises. Uh, that's the first definition of a bar that the state has had in many, many, many years, and in fact, it was passed as part of the legislation defining Michael's Law and the terms under which under 21-year-olds could access a bar. So we would recommend that that language, oh, that is referenced, and picking up the exact language from the state statute be placed into this ordinance. Uh, event venue, we looked at some of the language that had been discussed in a couple previous meetings, uh, actually don't have any, many concerns or problems about that. What we did is strengthen it a little bit to say that, first of all, an event venue is not a bar. So we had the language in there that says an event venue is not a bar. Further, we say that, uh, an event venue cannot have a permanent bar located in it. So you cannot take a bar that's not open and convert it to an event venue, and since it is designed for a temporary use, all alcoholic beverages that are brought into an event venue prior to the event or for the event are taken out of the event venue when the event is over. Uh, that is language that is common to the event venue statute in City of Savannah ordinance. Uh, we tried to wrap our board. We tried to wrap our line around live musical concert so that you, you really define that into a musical presentation by a band, a group, a duo and the like. And one of the things that we have recommended is that while you define that as a live musical performance, you also define what it is not. It is not a disc jockey. It is not a person playing pre-recorded music. It's not karaoke. It is a live musical presentation. We utilize the same concept for live performing arts presentation. And on the adverse of that, we're talking about it's not a film, movie or video presentation. So as you see, we're trying to narrow this so that truly is something that somebody would buy a ticket for, a ticket to go to and not just come into a site and, oh, we've got a film of a concert playing. We have also recommended that you actually develop a new class of license, and that is for the event venue. An event venue, the event venue license would not qualify the site to buy alcoholic beverages. It would still have to be licensed as a bar or what have you, but this would give them the capability to, to purchase those license, licenses. Jumping ahead to the persons under 21 being in bars, and the state statute is bars, you have a requirement in your ordinance for those venues or those facilities that wish to have Sunday sales to buy a Sunday sales permit so that you can understand and they can understand what the operational criteria and what your rules and regulations are. We are recommending that you add that very similar provision. And what that does, it gives your alcohol enforcement people the capability of looking at just the number of facilities that have decided that they're going to opt in and, and they want the 18 to 21 crowd to be able to come into their facility, they've got a separate permit that allows them to do that. All right, and you'll move at last to section six nine, which really is the meat of what this council has been grappling with and other councils, councils have grappled with as well. This is incorporating the body of the state statute, which is 3324.1. That statute is mandatory. That statute is not written to give you as a council the authority to pass an ordinance to allow eight persons under 21 into a bar under certain conditions. This isn't state law. It says that they in fact are allowed in those facilities. Now, you have the capability to be more restricted than the state law, but you can't opt out of the state law as you could if it was written to give you the option to draw an ordinance to allow that. So I want to make that distinction very clearly. Every jurisdiction in the state that allows alcoholic beverage sales is covered by OCGA 3324.1. So what we have done is we have looked at this, there's a definition for a bar that's a little more defined so that it says, again, I think this is some language that you've added, basically all individuals under 21 years of age are not allowed with the exception of subsection D in the ordinance. And that is where you incorporate by reference and by the actual language from the statute. And what we have looked at in terms of giving you a little more flexibility in terms of limiting that privileges, number one, not saying as the state law says, anybody under 21 can have access to a bar provided that they meet these requirements because that means a 16-year-old can go into that bar if they bought a ticket and paid a fee and there was live entertainment. And I don't think that was the intent of the state law nor do I think it is your intent. Excuse me. So what we have done, we have narrowed it to say between the ages of 18 and 21. That appears to be the audience that you're really trying to focus on in this. You have to purchase a printed ticket, so it makes it a little more restrictive. It can't just be a little ticket you go to Costco to buy a little roll of it and hand it out to folks. Your personnel have to have an ID scanner and everybody has to be scanned. So you, the operator, will be able to look and say, okay, this, this is who this person is. You have to place wristbands on the 18 to 21-year-old crowds in there and the wristbands that can't be taken off and, and kind of a little quirky idea. And we used to do this when my children were under 21 and all their friends were under 21 and they would come over to it and help party. We made them have a red solo cup before they would drink it out. And that seemed to work pretty well. So we're recommending that you require those 18 to 21-year-olds to have their own colored cup that is provided by the state. And of course, you have the requirement that that bar have an under age permit as well. And those, again, we tightened up the language a little bit, having to do with bouncers. There appears to be a slight loophole in there that says you can't be under 21 as a bouncer. But then in, in the next section talks about contract employees or employees who are not normal employees of the facility are exempted from the under 21. I don't think the intent is that. I think the intent is a bright line that says you cannot be a bouncer if you're under 21. And this seems to provide language to, to allow that. So we tighten that up that says such exemption shall not apply to individuals serving as a bouncer or bouncers. And I think that's the limit of what we have recommended. Your ordinance looks, looks very good, very thorough. We think this will address some of the things that, that have been discussed in the meetings. And we're offering this as a recommendation for your consideration to adopt it and incorporate it into your ordinance. Obviously, we're here at your direction to help you. We'd be willing to consider and make and recommend any, any changes that you would like to see to incorporate the addition of the definition of a bar that is contained in state law. So with that, I will be quiet and listen to the wisdom of counsel.
All right, thank you. Is there any ones before or against this?
I'd like to say something. So I'm Jay Grady, I'm Detective Director at the Adrian Center. And I'm here really out of confusion. Obviously, the Adrian Center is an event venue. And under these definitions that I have to, if I ever get a beer and wine license here, that I have to take it home with me? Is that the definition? So for a permanent structure like the art center, and under this law, as you currently recognize, it says that I have to remove the alcohol, I can't store it in the center. Also, I'd like to build a concession stand in our lobby, which I guess would be considered a bar, so that would prevent me from doing this as well. And I also like to take it on, I just heard this, has anybody been to a DJ festival lately? Their performance. And they bring a lot of money, so the restricted DJ is not a performance, and there'd be another caveat to this. So this is really, for me, seems to be more confusing and a lot more work for the Adrian Center in particular, but I would imagine for other permanent event venues that this would be, comes a big problem. So I'd just like everybody to take that into consideration. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone want to speak forward?
If I could, if I may, respond to the panel.
Sure.
Certainly, we would be very willing to work with you. In, in our definitions, a concession stand is not a bar.
But if I had beer and wine.
Well, we, I think we can address that. Again, these are recommendations, these are things that will ultimately be decided by this council. None of this is cast in stone, right now it's written in the sand.
And again, this is the first reading, so I still don't work in, work in towards.
Precisely. And what I will do is I will bring back what our final recommendation would be, given guidance from the council and input from individuals such as this gentleman, because we, what we don't want to do is create confusion. We want to create an ordinance that is very easy for you to understand and for the enforcement personnel to understand as well.
So as I understood it right now, if I didn't get an event venue license, I could apply for a bar license and that all of the rules and regulations of the bar.
You know what, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that. There would not be a bar license. It is, it is designed as a separate license because if you have a bar license, then you default to a bar, you're no longer an event venue. So I did misspeak on that.
Okay. All right, good deal. Thank you. All right, any others for or against? All right, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Counsel, we're open for discussion. Any questions? Any comments?
I mean, I have some concerns about this being almost exactly, and I'm not addressing Mr. Mike over there, but you know, I was under the impression he worked for the Restaurant Association and that he wanted to protect the language for the restaurants. And then here we are presented with what is essentially just the number 26 as opposed to 52. Well, we already voted down, and I don't see a lot of the adjustments, honestly, that the restaurants themselves have asked for. There's a mixturing provision in here that's kind of backwards and, and I guess, I look back at my own motivation and why, why this keeps getting brought up. For one, we've been talking about this for a decade and kept swinging the pendulum back and forth. Too restrictive, too permissive, too restrictive, too permissive. And to me, this one just goes back to the days of fake restaurants. I mean, if we're going to be a bar, be a bar. And if you get a bar and you got no kitchen, you got no reason to have 18-year-olds in that place. It's like a tobacco shop. You go to Haversham's in Savannah, they don't let 21-year-olds in there anytime for any reason, parent or guardian or any other reason. Why? Because all they have is liquor for sale. So if you go to a bar, you got no kitchen, you can do that if you want to be that license holder. I mean, I think we should allow that to happen, but I don't think we need to create another situation where we have these fake bars pretending to be restaurants. That's the problem that we've had for, for years. I mean, Legends was a bar, Wooden Nickel is a bar, Ruth Breeze was a sports restaurant. You know, or those were all restaurants. Everyone of those was a restaurant. And this just gets back to that situation where we, well, you're a bar except for 26 times a year and then you, you give the underagers a, a cup. Well, I mean, you can't throw that cup and get another cup. I mean, these are all just workarounds that allow, that allow business owners to skirt the law, which the state law is pretty clear. It says under 21 shouldn't be drinking. I mean, the Bullock Alcohol and Drug Council says the most effective way to curb underage drinking is to keep 18-year-olds out of bars. The police department says the most effective way to enforce underage drinking is to keep underage drinking out of bars. And here we are creating 26 events for a bar if you don't have a kitchen. It just seems like we're just in this culture of lying. And you know, we had a guy that stood up here two or three years ago and basically said, well, I was told to just fake my reports. This is what's going to happen again. We're going to be in this business of fake reports. And I just think, I mean, if we want to create a situation where you can do this as a, as a special event, but this idea that bars can just have 18-year-olds in with no kitchen, with no other, it just, it just seems like it's not a good idea. Seems like we're trying to move away from that, and this doesn't seem to address what we were trying to address before. So those are my comments. I'm, I think we can have some middle ground between this and, and the one that I recommended, but, but going back to this 18 and in the bars, it's just not a good idea. I'll tell you. I know the kids need something to do, but another, another incident will be worse for Spacenburg than, than not being able to go see a DJ if you're 19. I'm leaving that to you guys. I'm just wondering. Is there any further comments?
Basically, a question I think you might have answered. You're referring to a venue, event owner?
Yes, sir.
Does the event owner also have to be a bar owner or can somebody specialize in events? Maybe four events that are used.
The way this came about was that there was a facility that basically was a recording studio with a very large room. And they got into the business of inviting national performing artists in to perform in there. And there was no way for them to get a license to buy alcoholic beverages, so they licensed themselves as a bar. And with that, that meant at that time, nobody under 21 could get in. So they brought in some all ages acts and they had to turn people away at the door and refund their money, which caused them a problem. We now do have such a facility, I think it's called the Venue on Bay Street, if I'm not mistaken, that only operates for special concerts and it works, it works very well. The reason that the city of Savannah did not want a bar to be able, or a permanent bar in a facility to be able to be an event venue, they basically didn't want somebody leasing a vacant bar on Bourbon Street or in the downtown and proclaiming that they're an event venue. Actually, they were a full fledged bar. And so that's how we got into the event venue. In the process of doing that, that embraced the Civic Center, the Lewis Theater, Savannah Theater, the SCAP Theater, and all of these facilities that had events and were selling alcoholic beverages, but actually were licensed as a restaurant because they had some vestiges and a kitchen in there, but they actually never served any food. So we, we solved the problem that we didn't even know existed at that time. This, this is a very difficult issue to kind of wrap your arms around. And I'll go back to the point that I made earlier. This is state law. This is a bright line in the state code. This is not a provision that is permissive for local jurisdictions to adopt an ordinance to allow this category of under 21-year-olds into bars. Not restaurants, not anything else under bars. And in this same statute that created this is the language that defines a bar as a facility that has 75% of their sales in alcoholic beverage sales. Would it be that it gave you the authority to create an ordinance to trigger this? It's already there. It's written in the law. And so, and what really logically is before you is do you simply want to adopt the language that's in the state law to comply, which is certainly legal and in fact, you don't even have to adopt it because of state law? Or you can adopt something that is more restrictive to give you a little bit more control to tighten it up. And whatever direction you want to go in, you can go in. Quite frankly, when I visited a couple of weeks ago, I had two hours to look at the ordinance. And I had looked at the provisions that apply to the restaurants and generally, are people going to have any little problems with those? We can live with those. That's, I don't think that's the issue that is before you at this particular moment. I think the issue is very narrow, very narrowly drawn. And throw out the event venue. If you don't want to have a license for an event venue, figure that out. But you've got to figure out how to grapple with this provision that was created in 2016 by the passage of HB 152. That, that and that only really is the issue before you.
You did say that the state law, if it doesn't prevent 16-year-olds, 15-year-olds, 14-year-olds going into bars.
No, no, if I may.
Well, again, that is the state law is not exactly perfect.
Right, well, exactly. This was, this was crafted on the fly.
That's right.
What it says is no individual under the age of 21 shall enter or be allowed to enter a bar unless accompanied by a parent, et cetera. But then it goes on to say, this is, I worry with guardians who's 21, but it goes on to say, and here's the big exception, this subsection shall not apply to an individual while he or she is attending a live musical concert or a live presentation of the performing arts for which he or she has paid an admission charge. And what that says is your parents can take you into a bar to see a show, fine and dandy, bright light. But by nature of no individual under the age of 21, and then the exemption, I can walk up to a bar that has Jodeaux's Kazoo Ball Band playing and pay my $10 to get in, not at the door, I can buy a ticket somewhere else, and I'm 12-year-old, years old, and I'm legally allowed to go in there. And so that, that's the kind of flexibility that you have in terms of working with this law to create an ordinance that can tighten, tighten it and be more restrictive, but you can't opt out of the law. But you can't opt out of the law.
Any further questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item seven, which is the second reading consideration of a motion to approve or deny ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance of the State Code with ordinances amending Chapter Six Alcohol Beverages Regarding Section Six dash Three Definitions and Section Six dash Nine Minus versus Under Twenty-One Years of Age. Councilman Moore, you want to give us some insight on that?
I mean, I think I've said just about everything I wanted to say a little bit before. The reason I brought this up is because, again, I go and look at this, given this proposal, and I appreciate Mike coming in and putting this together. But I see it as going back to the days where we're pretending to be restaurants or sort of being bars. And I mean, the chief has expressed concern about putting an ordinance together like that. Bullock Alcohol Council citizens, I mean, and not even all of bar owners necessarily, or bar owners, restaurant owners are looking... We seem to be focused on letting eighteen-year-olds in bars, and that's the only thing we're focused on here. And it just seems to be, to me, that... That that's, you know, if we want to be pro-business, that's fine. If we want to make a clear line, but these bars with no kitchens that have twenty-six or fifty-two events, whatever number they'd be, set along... Just, it just is going back to a culture of fake bars, fake restaurants. Let's just say what these places are, give the businesses an opportunity to pick what kind of business they want to be, and get away from monkeying around with... I mean, this thing is two paragraphs long just to when you can come in and when you can't come in. Why can't we just make these a little cleaner? So that's... I have no problem meeting in the middle somewhere and giving some of these places, you know, an opportunity to do a few of these events a year. But when you start making this many, just... It just, again, if we're gonna get back to falsifying reports and not calling a bar a bar, not calling a restaurant a restaurant. I just would like, and, you know, and our staff has indicated that that's what they would like to see too. So, again, I'm only one of five, so I need some help from y'all too. I mean, this is what I'm hearing from my constituents, this is what I'm hearing from my citizens. I'm not... I'm a pro-business person, and I'm here to help the city grow as much as I can, but I have a responsibility to our citizens and the people in my district. And they are more concerned about security and safety than where an eighteen-year-old can go party in a bar. So, that's where I'm coming from, that's what's my motivation, and I'll leave it up to you guys to discuss.
I'll say that I'm inclined to agree with you. I just don't feel like voting on it today. I would like to go back and discuss it more with the people who are tired of discussing it with you. But I am... We're waiting to see what's... It was true. In effect.
All right, is there a motion?
I'd like to hear some comments, the only one of the persons to vote. I'd like to hear it from the best of the rest of them.
I basically agree with both Councilmen Moore and Ken. I think at this point, we need to take it.
And then, just to make sure, do you want Ken to be doing anything at this time, or are you guys... I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where... Where do you want staff in this conversation to go?
What is staff, Ken, you know this?
Wow, I already think...
Let me... Don't forget the staff is talking to somebody. So, what is... What's staff, Ken?
This is more than... Ken and I just talked about this this morning. This more than almost any issue that we deal with is more of a political issue, policy issue, and it is trying to figure out how do we use stormwater, how do we use water. Those things we know how to do really well. This is one of these issues where we're just looking for some direction so we can put together something that you all can feel comfortable about and pass, and the Police Department can enforce. And it's hard to do when you have so many different interests in trying to plead. And so, we're just trying to try out what it is you would like us to...
And I would like to add one thing. Both these representatives today are complying with those statutes, okay? Both of them are. And also that option A that was looked at before and was voted down through two, that is also complying. The fact that the language is lifted straight out of the state statute, but all three of them are compliant, but what about the barrier? There has been nothing presented to council that is contrary to state law.
Counsel, this is a political decision.
This is, like Mr. White more saying, this is not a legal or administrative or managerial sort of decision to be made. This is a political decision, and so we would, of course, defer to, from the elected officials to let us know what direction we need to go and draft it. An ordinance that hopefully all six of you all agree on.
A man in his ring there.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I'm, you know, at this point right now, I'm ready for a decision to be made. But if council needs more time to do so, I definitely want to sit out with them to do so. As you considered, this is something that's I'd most be considering as well. I'm concerned, not so much about, you know, bars or what happens in bars or everywhere, restaurants. The nuance that I'm concerned about is what happens in the apartment complexes and the houses. That's what I'm concerned about. And, you know, as I was talking to Ken this morning, a memory came back to me when I was in college. And I was back home for the weekend for a... For an event, and I went to a house party. And at this house party, there was tons of alcohol there, tons. And I wasn't going anywhere. And there was a guy that was there, and he was drinking both loads of alcohol. And, you know, he bouncing around, everybody had his attention. He went into a back room, and then a friend of mine, she went to go use the bathroom, and she saw him laying across the bed, and she hit his foot. And he didn't move. So she hit his foot again, and then she came out of the room and said, "Hey, look, this guy's in, this man across the bed, he's not doing anything." And so, we went into the room, and we shook him and shook him, and he never came to. So we picked him up, loaded him into the car, and took him to the hospital. And he had alcohol poisoning. And if we had not gotten him there, he would have died. That's what I'm concerned about. And so, if I got to pick a lesser of the two evils, because I don't drink, and I grew up with alcohol, with an alcoholic in my household, someone that was addicted to cocaine in my household, I'm more concerned about what's gonna happen when there is no form of supervision, no form of security. That's what I'm concerned about. So, council is gonna have to make a decision. And, you know, whatever the council decides to do, I'm gonna back you up one hundred percent. And I know staff is gonna execute with the best of their ability. But what I ask is, let's put this entire comprehensive issue to a point where we can get some good thought on it. And that's one thing, that's an experience that I had in my life. So I'm more concerned about what's happening outside of... I would rather see chief run into a club or night, whatever we call them, you know, we can call them McDonald's things, I don't care. But I would rather say, "Chief, hey, we got a problem over here, and chief can go there and take care of that problem." But we... All of the underage drinking, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen, is that these kids, they're gonna go get somebody that's in their class that's twenty-one, they're gonna get held up in an apartment, and they're gonna drink. I'm afraid of a young girl going to a bathroom in one of these parties and something, and she's sexually assaulted. So, that's the thought. But at this point right now, I'm about like John, and he's talking about those other people, you know. We've got to make a decision. And the great thing about public policy is that if we don't make the best decision, we can come back and fix it. You know, and that's it. And, you know, and I'm gonna tell you, Michael Gatto was not the first person to die at these clubs. He was not the first one. I grew up here, I've been in this city for... I call this city home for forty-four years. And it was every other year at one point that somebody was dying at these clubs. The only difference between Michael Gatto and the individuals that died is that Michael Gatto, who did what? Fake ID, because he was underage. And he was doing something that he was not supposed to do, and he didn't deserve it, and I believe it. But how many students died before him? So, I would much rather have public safety go to a area where they know that area, and we can figure out what it looks like, and then go from there. But when we think about this, think about the entire picture. And at this point, I know we need to... Is there no further discussion, we can make a motion as to what we want to do on this?
There. Come.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion to delay this until the August twenty-first council meeting. At that time, I've spoken to several councilmen, we're prepared to make a decision, but we wanted to hear what we heard this morning, which we listed all this time. So that is my motion to table this until August twenty-first.
Okay. Is there a motion now, any further discussion?
I'm taking that, if I can make it better.
Hold on, I'm not looking for any further discussion. The R is for second amendment. You can ask for... You can do this discussion beyond the motion. Any further discussion? No. All right. Ken, you have a second, is an amendment?
That's right.
Okay.
My order, the recommendation, however you want to take it. Recommend that Ken look at combining what you received from Mike with this proposal, finding a... Let's find a happy middle ground. I appreciate what Mike's done, but he's not... He doesn't represent the interest of the city, he represents the interest of a business group, so we need to focus on the city. So, if that's okay with you guys, take the best of both, maybe solicit an input from us and put together a best you can, kind of a single ordinance that we can vote on.
Yeah, it isn't a golden locks ordinance.
We like your four is just right.
And so, that all sounds too tough. It's something... That is your second, all right?
Yeah, that was a long amendment to the motion, but I think we got a call.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Derek?
I'm okay. Okay. Who we have for...
I was making sure, what do you want us to... We can bring you back another new one. Do you want us to put on somewhere all those that we've discussed? All the ones that we discussed, all those previous ones, or are we saying we're done with those, and we're gonna start over with what came to bring it back? I'm just trying to figure out where we are.
I will all the choices.
All your opinions.
All you being agreed.
And then that way, we'll have the history, we'll have everything, and then we'll have everything for you, and then you can pick one, and then we'll have the...
And Mr. Mayor, that was the purpose of my motion, to adjust exactly this, to delay any decision until we can see...
And you might suggest that Councilmember, whatever specific suggestions you have, to email that to Ken, so that he knows exactly what he's putting together. Can we agree on that?
Definitely.
All right. All right, we've had a first, we've got a second. All of them say aye.
Aye.
All right, that shows that we are tabling number seven until the August twenty-first meeting. Okay? Number... We'll move on to agenda item eight, which is the public hearing, the first reading, the ordinance 2018-07. An ordinance of the State Code for Chapter Two Amendment Amendment Appointment Seated For Members of the Alcohol Advisory Board As Set Out in Section Two dash Ninety-eight. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? All right, all of them say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
When this was brought forward, counsel, that the topic was brought up, that the conditions terms of the Alcohol Advisory Board members were going to expire, and they were all going to expire at the same time. So, the input I received from the elected officials was that we stagger this in the same manner that other committees within the city are, such as the people, the beautiful, the planning zone commission. And so, what we would do here is basically do a restart where the elected officials were appointed, they're a person to the Alcohol Advisory Board, with some of those terms expiring in two years, and some of those terms expiring in four years, half of them in two, the other half in four, so that there wouldn't be a complete turnover of board members. So, that's what the... And then, so that's what's before y'all phase, that difficult appointment process. One thing happened a little bit concerningly was in the proposed language that, you know, they, you know, it says that each successor, meaning after these two or four-year terms, will be appointed for a term of four years, and members may be in the same group for two successive years. And so, that's just where we are now, is that we're just trying to get it done right, so we have that stagger in there.
Okay? Yes. Okay, is that it? Yes. All right, does anyone want to speak for or against? All right, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Terrible.
Second. All of them say aye?
Aye.
Is there any discussion for council?
Yes, but Ken, a couple of things real quick. And this is just what I've found, I find it real hard to get a motion for the commission for your terms and games on these types of things. So, I recommend that you go to two and one, just because people are a little bit more willing to serve two years than we chose before. Just make it easier to find. And then, and also, I guess the language isn't in there where I thought it was before. But I'd like to go into the... As opposed to each individual council member continuing to appoint whoever, typically the boards, it comes before the entire board, and then we submit out patients. So, as opposed to whoever is in that seat appointing the next person, I recommend just putting it before the entire council, like we do with management, like we do with the board.
That's actually what is in this ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I read it wrong?
I was trying to find that, yeah. I find in the proposition, so each successor appointed to the alcohol board thereafter shall be appointed by majority vote of the governing body for a term of two years. So, if we do this, not these terms down to one and two, I'm only agreeing that the four years is a little long. But the way it stands now is that, and that's why I was trying to get out there, Mayor, was that the concern about?
That's the problem.
Well, and that's... And a federal... Fun out there.
Well, again, I had it on the wrong screen, but...
Yeah, so as it stands now, that all the terms after them would be by majority vote of mayor and council. However, y'all would prefer it saying that each elected official maintains that, but that's not the one, either way. So, I'll go ahead and make an amendment from here that the first staggered terms will be for one year, and the other will be for two. That's great.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, the proposed one looks just fine on the...
Actually, it is right on that one.
Everything's right on the proposed, I'm sorry.
It's been a long couple weeks.
I bet, yes.
Proposed already. I'll make a motion to that if you'd like, Mayor.
Okay. Well, that's a far swing.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we move on to agenda item number nine, which is consideration of a motion to authorize the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bullock County to share expenses of a cloud-based GIS system. Under this MOU, the city will manage and maintain this cloud-based system, and the county will share half of related expenses in this project. This project is funded in fiscal year 2019 with GIS Division of Central Services. Justin.
Good morning from Justin Daniel, GIS administrator. We will provide all back-end services to the city, and a bit portion of that is what we call enterprise GIS, and that is a way we can share data to the entire organization. Currently, our enterprise system is a hardware-based system that's here in-house inside of our network, and we need to upgrade it. And at this upgrade, I'd like to move to a cloud-based system, which increases our security, increases our redundancy, and it also allows us to not only share data within our organization, but share data outside of the organization. And with that in mind, we have asked the council to enter into agreement with Bullock County so that they can help posture this, and they too get the access to this server. It'll be managed here at the city, and the county will reimburse us for half the cost, and it's non-binding, so if any of the two parties need to dissolve... And it's non-binding, so if any of the two parties, uh, need to dissolve it any time they can, so that's it.
Is there any question or discussion by council? No. Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them say?
Aye.
Our agenda item has passed.
We put a number back to number eighteen. Were you wanting to mention bringing appointments to the next meeting?
In fact, the ordinance as written says that the initial appointment is required, you may on September fourth, two thousand and eighteen. It's in section twelve of our case. Is that number, I'd like to get your second then or send me, send me, you know, after, after, after second, without reading, whatever way, whatever mechanism you want to do. And I, and obviously those appointments, um, would go to me and, uh, Ms. Starling.
All right, um, agenda item ten, which is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of the New York City Council of the City of State for Georgia calling for a general municipal election to be held on November six, twenty eighteen, in regards to brunch bill. Kane?
Um, this is, um, Senate Bill seventeen, SB seventeen, allows our local referendum to determine if, if, um, if a governing authority will allow Sunday sales between, um, eleven AM and twelve thirty PM on Sundays. It's colloquially, colloquially known as the, uh, as the brunch bill. What, um, this resolution for you would get, would do, uh, would allow us to put, to get that referendum item on or, um, on the ballot for the municipal election. And then, then the question on there would be, shall the governing authority of the city of State where it be authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages for home premises consumption between eleven AM and twelve thirty PM? This would obviously not be a vote for that. It would just simply be a vote to put it on the ballot and let you like to decide whether they want that or not.
All right, any discussion by council? No discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them say?
Aye.
Our agenda item showed that it's passed. Um, eleven, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, a resolution approving and adopting a twenty eighteen redevelopment plan and associated tax allocation district for the, for the area with the city and authorizing the entry into one or more general agreements between the city, board of commissioners from Bullet County, uh, of the Bullet County and on the board of education of Bullet County. Kane?
Uh, Mayor, Council, this is, this is, this is a two-fold item. On one hand, it's the adoption of, uh, the redevelopment plan that is attached here. And also that the city itself would, um, would approve and, and adopt around redevelopment plans and tax allocation district. Would the city serving as redevelopment agency for, for the, uh, for the parcel out at Old Register in the south side of Veterans Memorial Bypass, um, the old registered paths. It's, you know, it's the one with Bishop and Basil Socrates stadium on it. So what would happen here would be that not only would we approve that, that tax allocation district to become effective at the beginning of the year of being in two thousand and nineteen, but it also allows staff to enter, enter governmental agreements with the two other taxing authorities, um, that, that have, that are collecting taxes on that property. The, um, Bullet County Board Commissioner and the Board, and the Bullet County, um, School District. And, or the Board of Education, Bullet County. Basically, this would just be that they would pledge their increment on that property so that, um, there would be additional money to pay off the bond. And the bond would be used, the bond financing would be used for, um, for public infrastructure improvements on that property, mainly, um, putting in a road that would connect with, uh, Berinda Drive, which is part towards Southern South Campus, having that connect with Old Register Road through, uh, through DDP Enterprises land, uh, where it's supposed to occupy stadium and other development look perks. And, um, and also doing improvements on Old Register Road itself and the intersection of Old Register Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. That would be the extent of what the city, that as redevelopment agency could pledge or commit, uh, taxing and funding for. And of course, once the, um, once the bond servicing on this public infrastructure projects were, are completed, uh, the tax allocation district will, um, will terminate. And then the city would, would then collect, uh, taxes based on, on, uh, what the current, what the then-current value of the property would, would be. However, in the meantime, the city would just be collecting taxes on what the base is certified, um, for on, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. So we'd be foregoing collecting taxes on the appreciation on this parcel until the, um, until the public infrastructure, uh, bond financing is, um, is paid off. And, um, basically, I think as planned, it should be well before this, um, this hat is scheduled to expire. And also, of course, but as I said, the adoption of that and also allowing us to let, have IGAs with, uh, with the county school districts so they can pledge their increment for the same reasons and, and under the same terms.
Thank you, Kane. All right, all right, is there any discussion for Kane? Is there a motion?
Remove.
All right, this is motion to approve, correct? All right, all of them say?
Aye.
All right. Then show the agenda item eleven has passed. And State Department, this is a big deal. This is a very big deal. Um, discussion, uh, agenda item twelve, discussion regarding district T-SLOSS funding and participation, um, project list. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you, what I put up on the screen, uh, is a list of potential T-SLOSS projects that everybody knows, the referendum for transportation sales tax. I'm going to refer to it today, T-SLOSS passed back in May. And it's estimated that if tier one and tier two were both collected, the city would get roughly a little over twenty-five million dollars over a five-year period. So five million a year, we're basically borrowing four million a year for tier one. So what I presented, and me and Mr. Webmore decided the best way to present this would be similar to what we did in the SLOSS list, which we did several months ago, which was to get in front of you today, that list. And that list is what we utilize as we, as staff. That's information we've gathered from citizens, from our CIP, from YOP, and developed this list. So when we were first seeing how we should distribute these monies, this is what we've come up with. And this is just preliminary, what staff is looking for from, from y'all at this point would be, to look at the individual categories at least. Let me give you an example. First group is called bike pit. Most of those are sidewalk projects, but a few of them are trails. And you'll see a list of seven point three million dollars worth of projects. Tier one would bring in more like, and, and what we're recommending is roughly two million for sidewalks. And the highlighted ones roughly add up to that two million, two point one million. So we're looking for y'all to give us some direction with each of these categories. So the rest of them, intersections, roadway improvements, striping and signage, streetscape, traffic calming slash pedestrian safety, resurfacing, which is the, you're used to that, resurfacing roads, paving of roads, we have, we have one street, the city still needs to be paved. We go to extensions, parking, that's parking throughout town. And we also put some, I say, again, this is staff putting these dollars in there. There's one group that, if the referendum was passed as a group, there's two separate groups. Transit, that's one hundred fifty thousand, you see, coming up there. And then it's the rest of the money. So you can interchange the referendums passed as a transportation taxes. That's how we want to separate those. And this is simply us trying to distribute those and trying to spread it around and get the, what I consider the best bang for our buck, but also do a little bit in each of those areas. And then these are identified projects, but y'all know that projects come in sideways. And if we could have another, you know, next month, if we hadn't thought about. So what we're looking for, and Mr. Webmore added this, is to look at these, these subtotals you see, such as the two point one million under bike pits. Is that a good distribution of money? Or would you rather put three million dollars on the sidewalks? But if that's the case, you know, where do we want to take it from? And you'll also see some generic areas. Even if you get out of intersections, you see new traffic control, geometric improvements are similar. Again, that's, there's times where we have no idea the development's going somewhere. Or maybe we've already had a traffic signal warranted at an intersection, but we just haven't had the funding. Um, you're going to have, I've left some general dollars in there in some areas. So for example, the traffic controls under intersections, there's a hundred fifty thousand under tier one there. So some of that money can be shifted somewhere else. I would say leave, leave some money like that in each one, so you've always got that discretionary money to pop in here and do something, um, short hit, shorten it.
Robert, how flexible are these numbers? Like I know for SLOSS, you kind of have to keep it in this, you know, if you put it for fire, it's kind of got to stay for fire, but you can move it around in the fire department. How, how similar is it? In other words, if we set aside certain money for bike pit, does it have to stay in bike pit or can it move down?
Yeah, that's got to be correct. I think you can jump between these.
It's a little more flexible.
I think we don't have all those categories that we just talked about.
I think it's just that, I think it's that top one, and then the transit. Transit can't, can't split back and forth and we can't take much from the top and put it in the transit. But it can.
All right, that's because that was, we were moving on, right?
Yeah. And so within that larger category, we can move them around. But the thing is, when we, when we all get, get back together sometime, I'm thinking that sometime we might have this type of work study where we sit down. I don't want to go over this and it's the only thing we're going to talk about. Because staff will also be looking at the projects that you come up with. The ones that, that, that we can do fairly quickly, like this in the first year or two. Some of these others, we're going to need to write away. We're going to, going to take a lot longer to design, we've got other projects. But, but we're also going to need to know that those are the ones you want to do. Those are just going to have to plan out a little bit more. The one, the, the goal that, that staff has is to make sure, and another item coming up right after this one, is, is to make sure that we get the, the, the projects out, we get the, uh, money spent and get the projects completed on time. Because as this shows, we have, we've got another twenty million dollars worth of, of projects to do that this loss won't be able to take care of. So if in the five years, we want to be, uh, able to show that we receive this money, we've got the projects done, things are working good, so then we can, we can host the public again of, okay, let's, let's finish what we're going to start with. But that, Robert has another one coming up right after this. So this is, this is just kind of get it out there. To start the discussion, we might bring it up again and then somewhere along the way.
I think it works as, it would be maybe the next step. And I want to show you this map here in a second, when I want to add what Mr. Webmore was saying. Now, what we're thinking is, again, there's stuff we can do in-house. Resurfacing, striping, signage, we do those on an annual basis anyway. And we get the, the GI dollars and combine those with our, in the past, and our CIP, which is, as far as the SLOSS, we've announced with transfer of T-SLOSS. And we're doing those in-house. And you'll see a lot more resurfacing and striding and signage in early as the spring, you know, which is going to be, it's going to be important that we, we ask for this money, but now we're going to get it. Let's use it, let's use it prudently and prioritize things. So we can do that in-house. But what we, what staff is recommending is that we're going to get this, these designs out on the street. Because again, we don't have the capacity, uh, like we have in the past to do a lot of in-house. So our idea is put out a request for qualifications, do those in, get those proposals in, select those engineering companies and surveyors and throw these projects out. And then have a lot of them being designed all at one time. You've got a lot of engineers working on them, you've got a lot of projects that are going to come in. In the meantime, you're working on your prioritization. And as soon as you get those, and you look at a project and maybe you originally thought, well, that's a project we want to do, but it takes a lot of right-of-way acquisition. Or maybe some environmental firm is going to be, drag you out a little bit. Well, we can pull another one in there and do it. But the best part is, a lot of times we get this information for a grant. And it's like, hey, we've got a safety grant of some type. And we'll go, well, let's go apply for it. Because, yeah, but we don't really have a project in mind. And even if we did, we don't have a design, nor do we know how much it's going to cost. Well, now you have ten or twelve, fifteen of these projects sitting, done, sitting on a shelf, ready to go. And that grant application, the process comes in, that opportunity, you grab it. It's like we did on East Main Street. Took that two hundred thousand, combined it with our money, and then we shipped that two thousand, two hundred thousand to another party. Just a way that we can finally get a little bit ahead on these things and get them in the hopper and get them going. So we're excited about that, get their designs going, get them in, and get them going. Reason I put this map up here, just based on, and I want to appreciate the GIS division for this, helping we put this together. This map shows you the districts, all the different districts. But it also shows, I wasn't necessarily trying to spread things around, but this gives you just a good idea that every district is being affected by, by T-SLOSS right off the bat. Within the next first year, two years, we have identified, yellow is your sidewalks or your trails. Blue is drainage. They said, why is drainage under T-SLOSS? If drainage is associated with a roadway, then you can pay for it out of T-SLOSS. And in some cases, we might be needing to. The green diamonds, those are intersections. You see those really all, all over the place, intersections we've identified over the years. We've been, sometimes been on this for decades. Let's knock these things out. Uh, west, and you see on West Main, there's a great streetscape project, as well as sidewalk, as well as intersection. And there's actually drainage underneath the digging well. So I just wanted to show this. It just shows you how spread out and how really exciting these blocks have been before.
And now, those are all the highlighted projects, yes, or is that?
Those are the highlighted.
Those are the highlighted. So those are the ones that, some of those have been CIP projects for?
For a long time, those right ones. And you'll see that these are the ones that are yellow on here, on your sheet. And yellow is simply staff saying, we see those as priorities for lots of different reasons, whatever criteria we utilize. But it doesn't mean, again, that you see one that's not highlighted, that that doesn't mean be one on your list. That's, that's where y'all come in.
Well, Robert, let's give me that.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Uh, we move on to agenda item fourteen, consideration of a motion to set the date for a required free public hearings.
Twenty thirteen.
Oh, we're at number thirteen? Oh, my bad.
No, you need that.
Yes. Uh, agenda item thirteen, discussion in consideration of a motion to approve creating the new position of T-SLOSS project manager. Robert?
I'm calling it the T-SLOSS project manager. That, that title may change. That's just for discussion purposes. But if y'all recall at the budget retreat, this was discussed, that if T-SLOSS passed, you just saw, you see all the projects, you see them on this, you see them on the map. Somebody needs to take that and be, that's their, that's their focal point. It's going to be between right-of-way acquisition, uh, engineering, acquisition of engineering services, prioritization of the projects. And I'd like to mention putting this stuff out on the street and start construction. So you've got inspection, you've got documentation administration, you've got complaints that might be coming in. You want to publicize it properly. You can see there's a lot. It really could be more than one person. But we want to, or we want to hire at least one person. And that's what asking today is, is a recommendation and a request to hire what I'm calling the, uh, T-SLOSS project manager acquisition. And, uh, we, we have a full job description that we're working on the approval of, but that moves on pretty, pretty quick. And the, the sooner they can be hired, the better. And keep in mind that T-SLOSS dollars, not that this position necessarily funded out of T-SLOSS, but, um, T-SLOSS dollars themselves don't start flowing until I think this fall. And T-SLOSS, uh, the smaller cities get the money upfront, so it's really going to be the first of next year. But that doesn't mean, again, that we're not going to want to start doing the, the design now. We'll just have to pay and reimburse ourselves when T-SLOSS starts coming in. So this is a request to approve this position.
Is there any further discussion? No questions by council? Is there a motion?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all of them say?
Aye.
All right. Now we move on to agenda item fourteen, which is consideration of a motion to set the date for the required free public hearings. Solicited input involving the millions of seven point three oh eight for the twenty eighteen property taxes. Let's see.
Yes, this is the free public hearings that are on five agents, which is only seven point three oh eight. It is considered an increase. The low back road rate is seven point three oh eight. We did seven point three oh eight. Current knowledge rate, the percentage rate was in four point three three percent.
Any discussion by council? Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
All of them say? Agenda item fourteen has passed. We're down to agenda item fifteen, consideration of a motion to approve RFP for serious state-level employee pays plan study. Mr. Webmore?
This is an item that we discussed, uh, during the budget. Uh, that was just recently adopted. Uh, we've had a number of positions that have been open that have taken at least two searches to, to find someone. Uh, that's the city manager, having the development director, city engineer, uh, resources director, payroll clerk, firefighters, police officers, CDL licensed drivers, equipment operators, sanitation workers, and almost everybody that we've been trying to hire early. With the unemployment rate down to.
Uh, with the unemployment rate down to three point nine, the competition has gotten, gotten even keener than it was before, uh, we, this, this study, we would like to not only be compared against other cities, but, but also the private sector, because we have many of our positions, if we compete with, with the private sector, Robert D. and, and example, IT, finance, uh, engineering in, in, in general, and so hopefully, uh, when we get the study back, we'll be competitive up there. At least, you want to, where, where we need to.
Any questions by council? Is there a motion?
Subdue.
Is there a second? Thank you. All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Our agenda item fifteen has passed, is there any further business from the city council? Uh, sitting here, your comments, Jason, uh, will go up to him.
Yes, sir. Um, so this week, our, um, our vendor, um, Republic Services, that we have contracted with, with Landfill in Wayne County, as well as our transportation hauler, Raffles Enterprises, notified us that due to all the rains, the landfill's been receiving in Wayne County over the last several weeks, um, that they've been really slow and backed up at times, which has had an impact, direct impact on our transfer station operations. May not have transferred necessarily to collection on the street as much, except for maybe delays in, in, in routes during the day, um, but this just emphasizes how undersized, in addition to that, I should add that, um, the volume of solid waste being processed during the last month or two, at the transfer station's been a lot higher than normal, well over three hundred tons a day, which, uh, in our facility was designed for around two, two fifty tons per day to handle. This is, this is a problem that we recognize, we, uh, understand, uh, that we were planning in our CIP, it's all the ways fun to do some enhancements, improvements, rather, um, to the transfer station, and hopefully when we do that, we'll be able to accommodate more floor space for times like this, where when we just aren't getting trucks turning around from Wayne County. Public does a great job, um, trying to manage that as best it can, but when they've been receiving the kind of rainfalls that we've been receiving, there's just only some that they can do in sense of operation. So I just want to make sure that the mayor, council, the public recognize that we're doing all we can do, um, but at times when the floor is full, we don't have trucks available, trailers available, we may have to turn people away at the transfer station, to come back at a later time, and, um, and that could have a direct impact on the private business, as well as the county and county's operations.
And the forecast is for the next week, forty to fifty percent chance of rain every day, so, we just want to make you all aware, if you start hearing those kind of things happening, they, they're happening, there's a reason why.
This, this weather pattern, it could be an ongoing problem that could continue to happen.
Are there any public comments? All right, is there a consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters? Um, consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters will state and our potential allocation, uh, in accordance with OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash proof, twenty twenty. Is there a second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
We'll be moving to the second.